Right, hello and good evening everyone. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. It is September 12th, 6:31 right now. This meeting is being recorded as we speak. It will be live on Zoom with the details set forth on the second page of the agenda. It will also be available for viewing on Cohasset's Facebook page as well as Cohasset143TV as well. We will be entertaining questions from the public as well as to the extent that we have questions from Zoom. At the discretion of the Chair, we will promote people and we will not be monitoring comments online as well. So with that said, I would call to order the meeting of the Select Board. Mr. Pluck?
Chris Pluck's here.
Mr. Grady?
Paul Grady, present.
Ms. Marr?
Ellen Marr, present.
Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton, present.
Gene Healy-Dippold, present. If the Board would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright. So the first thing on the agenda is an executive session item number six under exemption six. Before we do that, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the Hodge family as well as for 9/11 victims. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is an executive session exemption six. This is to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. The Chair so declares, the Board will discuss potential property acquisitions. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session under exemption six.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session under exemption six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Vote call, I have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Pluck?
Chris Pluck's aye.
Mr. Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
Ms. Marr?
Ellen Marr, aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Gene Healy-Dippold, aye. Alright, we will move into executive session and plan to return at seven. Thank you.
There he is. All right, it is 7:07. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board, September 12th. We are coming out of executive session. Are there any public comments?
I just wanted to update you on the dedication we have planned for Michael Ernst. On Sunday, October 22nd, we'll be dedicating Michael Ernst Square at the top of Sori Street in Fair Oaks. That starts at noon. And then we move over into one o'clock, we do a rededication of the ghost of Mother's Memorial, which is a much grander event, large, attended and lots of ceremony. We'd like someone from the board to speak if you could, perhaps a proclamation. So we've coordinated the activity with the police and we're getting the school buses and veterans. Pretty well set to go, but I thought I should start getting word out now.
So that's Sunday, October 22nd.
Yes, and that's picked because that's the only date around now that those families can get back. They all live in Colorado now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Right, now we are moving on to the next agenda item, which are license permits events. We're looking at a change of manager for Liquid Beverage Inc. doing business as Wine and Spirits Depot. Do we have? All right. Feel free to.
I'm Steve, I'm the new manager. I live in Kingston, I've been the assistant manager in our Pembroke location since last February.
Okay.
And I also have about 10 years plus experience in retail management.
Great, thank you for coming.
Yep.
Are there any questions the board has? Okay, I should have opened actually by saying the Cohasset Select Board, acting as liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023 at 7:05 at Wilcock Commons. The hearing is to consider the application of Liquid Beverage DBA, Wine and Spirits Depot located at 380 Chief Justice Cushing Highway for change of manager. The proposed manager is Stephen Kuntz, who's right here. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed writing, the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, so no questions, no comments from the public. I will entertain a motion to approve the change of manager for Liquid Beverage Doing Businesses, Wine and Spirits Depot located at 380 Chief Justice Cushing Highway to change the manager to Mr. Stephen Kuntz.
Change of manager to Stephen of Liquid Beverage Doing Businesses, Wine and Spirits Depot.
I'll second. Sorry. All those in favor, please vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving to the next agenda item, which is a Class II Used Car Dealer License. This is Jay Rattenberry, doing business at Rattenberry's Auto Works, 574 Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
I'm Gina Mullin, this is Mark Rattenberry here, representing Jay Rattenberry for used car license at 574 Chief Justice here in Cohasset.
Okay.
Previously, the license was held by John's Cock here.
At the same location.
Same location.
Are there any questions that the board has from Mr. Rattenberry?
I would like to say that I've known the Rattenberry Senior for a while, he's very well regarded in the community, long-term community business, I heartily recommend. I went down there and looked at the facility today, it's clean, well managed. So I would urge my fellow select board members to vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Kuntz. Are there any comments from the board? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Rattenberry, doing business as Rattenberry Auto Works, so moved. So there is a motion for that, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Okay. Now, on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is relating to a town hall building acquisition. So here, we wanted to open the meeting with a item that has been the subject of executive session for some time. This is a project that the Select Board has been working on, really since last town meeting, following the failed vote for rebuilding and renovating our existing town hall in light of the needs that still remain to address how to safely house our municipal staff. We have done a relatively extensive review of commercial buildings throughout Cohasset, including those that are on the market, such as the Oaks, and many other buildings that are not on the market, which I'm not going to identify because those owners were kind enough to share commercially sensitive information with us to help inform our decisions. But where we did end up, we unexpectedly came upon an opportunity recently, and that is with One Pleasant Street. Mr. Schwer, do you want to show the video?
Absolutely.
For One Pleasant Street, so this is a brief introduction into what One Pleasant Street is. Formerly to James Portcrossing. So we're going to do a little video right now very quickly.
Do you want to mute this?
If I may say, to those who Those who didn't see the video on Zoom because it was a little laggy, that video will be up tonight, or those who want to view it, up on the website.
We have an issue with the screen right now. It's probably just a... Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you, Justin. So One Pleasant Street is a property that we have been considering for many weeks now. I'd say approximately six weeks. And this is a property that is going to be approximately $10 million, which will include the administrative offices, as well as the 14 units up above that we propose to keep and maintain and use as rental to ensure that we have the additional 13 units of affordable housing come online, which is very important to Cohasset in terms of making sure we have affordable housing, not just to make sure that we meet our 40B requirements, which I think many people are tuned to, but also just in general to ensure that we have affordable housing stock. And so we have been doing the work with respect to ensuring that this is the right property for us, and we believe that it is, in light of the information. I believe that it is. I'm not going to speak for my fellow board members, but tonight we do intend to vote on moving forward with the purchase with the owner of One Pleasant, who we thank for all of his engagement and cooperation during the back and forth. We intend to sign the applicable agreements this week. And so I'm going to stop and let my fellow board members weigh in, but that is the background of One Pleasant Street, which really affords us an opportunity to buy a town hall that is brand-new and will be essentially almost entirely ready, but for a few things that we need to buy, such as a town vault, in order to manage our specific services, that if we had to build this building ourselves in light of public construction requirements, would probably cost two times, if not three times, as much as we saw from the prior town hall process when you go through the public construction bidding process. So it is a fantastic deal for the town from a financial standpoint, in my opinion. So, Mr. Grady.
I'd just like to emphasize where it is. It's in the village. It's a walk. It's right down the street from our new ideal. And I was just thinking about the same thing, is we are actually, for the dollar amount, we are addressing our 40B needs. We're more than keeping... We're keeping our town staff, employees, people coming out of town hall safe. It's up to date, and it's a brand-new building, and it's standing there. And so my thoughts are, it's an ideal place for a town hall.
Mr. Krueger?
Collection of the feedback we received in our last town meeting. The town was very open with us, very clear. And I think as we get into more detailed conversations about what this is, how we got there, and what it brings to the town, people will see that this is, I believe, what the town is asking for.
I think we've learned through the last two Town Hall Building Committee processes that every option has been exhausted, whether it's land that the town owns or could acquire and build, or renovating town hall. Every stone was unturned, and then this opportunity came upon us, kind of like the answer to what the town people wanted, with something affordable and something in the village. As Mr. Grady indicated, village location was paramount in both of those previous groups. So I think it's an incredible value for us, provides parking that we need, provides a safe and secure environment for the seat of our town government, which is our town hall, and provides affordable housing, both in the capital A and a lowercase a, with the units on the second and third floor.
Right, Mr. Krueger?
Yeah. I echo some of the other comments. We have been working on this for quite some time. We are very cognizant of the votes in the past, recent past and further away past, which the town roundly said there's a price tag that they will not go to. Being able to find something under, way under the price, it's under $10 million, and it's all new construction. We don't have to spend extra money for that. It's pretty much done. We'll get income from the affordable units. The affordable units are very significant because we are right on the cusp of being eligible to have our zoning overturned by a 40B, unless we keep our affordable housing at 10% or higher. This will help quite a bit. It keeps everything in the village. It also supports the village with all the economic activity of people coming to town hall, of town hall personnel and visitors, you know, having lunch or whatever. And let's also remember that although we likely are going to vote to support it as a select board, this is subject to town meeting and to town referendum. So there'll be a lot more information. So for as we are now, I am very pleased to support this proposal.
All right. Thank you to my fellow select board members. And I did want to assure the public that we realize that this is big news, perhaps unexpected news for some of you, and it's still going to go through the regular processes. This will be subject to a town meeting vote and then a special election, because this will be paid for through a tax increase, and we'll get into that later on during the financial planning update. And so there will be plenty of chances to weigh in. We're also going to talk about a community engagement plan. And last but not least, we haven't forgotten about our existing town hall, and there the focus is going to really be on historic renovation, but perhaps staged over time and using our existing town hall to meet some of our other short-term space needs as we try to maneuver through some of these different building acquisitions. And so, without further ado, are there any public comments? Anything? Okay. We'll move on to our next acquisition. So, oh, well, before I do that, I'd like to entertain a motion for moving forward with the acquisition of One Pleasant Street, as well as the additional items that we know we're going to need to procure for approximately $10 million. That's the total price tag that we're looking at with respect to the cost of acquisition, as well as the expected procurements, the moving costs, those soft costs, and a few hard costs that will be built in as well. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I would make a motion to move forward with the purchase of One Pleasant Street with everything aforementioned entailed with the total asking price.
Subject, of course, to the vote of town meeting.
Vote of town meeting and special election.
And the special election. Okay. Would anyone like to second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Everyone is in favor. No one is opposed. Okay. So we will proceed with the town hall purchase, subject to all of the normal processes, including going through advisory committee, capital, and public engagement, of course. Now, the next item is police and fire building acquisition. So here, I will turn to my vice chair, Mr. Grady. I'd like to talk about that item.
Either Chief Quigley or Chief Doc Ray want to say anything?
Chief Doc Ray is not on tonight. Chief Quigley's video does not work
Okay.
at this moment. He's just having an issue with it.
All right. So we can start.
Yeah, maybe introduction, then we'll show the video.
What the town is doing right now, we are looking at the purchase of a building located at 135 King Street. It is new site for the police station and a fire department annex. It's been long in the making, many years coming, that the current police and fire station on Elm Street no longer has the adequate space and services for either the police or fire departments. And I'm going to emphasize, and these are the folks that keep this town safe day in and day out. There's been assessments of the building, and it's found that it's inadequate parking for staff, visitors, and there are other issues, including non-compliant holding cells. We've been actually cited that by the state for a number of times. Limited space for bookings, no controlled access for prisoner loading, in other words, a Sally port, unloading, insufficient storage for records, equipment. There is no interrogation space in the building, no specialty units, and that includes spaces for the detectives and for the fire department alone. Inadequate non-compliant storage for equipment and medical supplies, no secure decontamination area for post-event cleanup. They have inadequate bunk space for staff and no dedicated training space. We've been looking for years for some space to either create an annex or at least a separate police department. We've hopefully come up with a little bit of both. And we have sought location on 3A for many years, including the old Esposito Nursery, but there were wetlands and soil condition issues that put a stop to that. There was a parcel adjacent to the Preserve apartment complex that had elevation easement issues, and we've looked for temporary space and short-term availability. This site, again, located at 135 King Street, offers all of the above. The building is there. It needs to be retrofitted, and this building allows, I'm sorry for retrofitted, to the Elm Street, and includes and addresses the fire department needs economical solutions and to a very pressing need. In comparison to what we're looking at, Situate was $16.2 million for a new building in 2017, Hingham $46.7 million in 2022. What we're looking at is a total all-in, contingencies built in, hard and soft, of $10.5 million. And that will be funded through a debt exclusion, which we'd like to fund up to 100% of the costs, and emergency management grant, which should, could allow funding for new emergency management space.
So we're talking about 135 King Street
135 King Street.
for, to house our police station and an annex for fire. Total cost is $10.5. That's about $2 million in contingency, which is a lot, but likely necessary, given the nature of building, public safety buildings. But still, a fantastic deal, particularly when you review every public safety building that has otherwise been built over the last decade in Massachusetts, and we have that data. So, Mr. Schrader, could you show the video?
Absolutely. So for the folks here tonight, who'll see the video, and Zoom is being a little glitchy tonight, sharing the screen with the high-conditioned video. So for those who would like to view that video, that'll be on our website, CohassetMA.org. It'll be a link right at the top of the website, where you can click on it, and you can watch that video right now, which will tomorrow morning.
King Street come to life in a way that's hard just to talk about. So I wanted to invite my fellow board members to say a word about their views on 135...
Well, I'm going to say this, Mr. Krueger and Chief Doc Ray. Chief Quigley, your presentation blew my mind right out of the water. But I don't think there's a price we can put on safety. I really don't. And these folks are doing it day in and day out. I think everybody here has been down to police and fire department and stations and seeing how congested it is. I just think that this one, especially for the price tag and what we're looking at, is really a no-brainer for the town. I just think it's in all of our best interests, including best interest of our police and fire departments, to continue to do all the work that they do every day. And they explained it a heck of a lot better than I could.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Mr. Kluck?
So at town meeting, we heard loud and clear that the town wants us to be smart with the tax dollars. So I think both of these investments do that in very positive ways. When Ellen and I joined the select board, one of the first things we did was go down to the police and fire stations, and we saw that they're not just very hard places to do any kind of work, but they're explicitly out of compliance with state regulations. So this is not just a want, this is not just an improvement, this is a need. So we need to make this investment in our police and fire, and I think this is a smart way to do it.
This was like a gift that just came out for a solution. Again, Mr. Grady alluded to the cost for some of our neighboring communities and what they've done with brand-new public safety buildings, and this seems to answer all of the needs we have. I'm especially pleased about the fact that the response on the west side of the railroad tracks is going to improve to Beechwood and the 3A corridor and the hillside and the schools, which are all on the west side of the railroad tracks, and as well as north Cohasset, which from Elm Street, north Cohasset is a tough, tough haul at times. We have our detective unit there already. We're renting space. They find the space and the access in and out of the building, and being right there on 3A to be quite beneficial. And I'm thrilled that the emergency management team can move from the basement of the Deer Hill to a much more congenial, you know, congenial space for them, aligned with our police and fire departments. So I think it's excellent, and I agree with Mr. Kluck's. Our visit to the police station, I hadn't been there in decades. It was eye-opening, and it's not, this is not a want, this is, we need to do this.
Mr. Krueger?
Yeah, I think when you look at what we need to do, even though we are a small town, we do need a functioning police station, we need an efficient fire station. I would want to speak a little bit to the overall price. Understand that we are acquiring the property for considerably less than $10 million. And then, in order to make a functioning police and the fire, what's called a Sally port, is some specialized construction. Jail cells are not cheap. Extra space has to be done to certain law enforcement standards. So what we thought we would do is present to the town a realistic all-in cost, because we're able to acquire the actual raw real estate and building. It's a pretty solid building, but it's going to take quite a bit to turn it into a functioning police station. I don't think we're paying $10 million for that lot up there, because that's the all-in price. And we did that so we thought it was fair to the town to understand exactly what this is costing. And I hope our taxpayers notice a pattern here, which is figuring out how we solve our town problems, but do it in a way that's consistent with an 8,000 resident town. Let's not overspend. Let's spend wisely, because when we spend wisely on these and get it done, there's money, leftover money for all the other needs for the town. So I'm very happy with this. I've looked at it. I have a lot of experience in law enforcement agencies, and I think we need to do this. I think this is a very cost-effective way of doing it. Thank you.
So just to provide the town with a little more background, too, we did, over the summer, hire a public safety expert in building public safety buildings. We retained them using available grant money, and we are basing the price off of the information that they have provided to us, including the cost of creating jail cells that are, in fact, compliant. It needs to be, it costs more because they require much more structural enhancements and plumbing than you would normally have in a commercial building. And so, to Mr. Krueger's point, that does increase the price, which is why you see public safety buildings across public safety buildings across, I'm sure, America, but the information we have is in Massachusetts are very substantial in light of the additional requirements that you have with respect to public, public safety. But to Ms. Mar's point, this really was a gift that landed in the town's lap, and we have been doing our due diligence, but also appreciating that this is a time-limited, unique opportunity that we need to act on. We have been looking for land on 3A, I'm told, for approximately 30 years for the right location for police and fire. A lot of our police and fire calls are at 3A as the population has changed and also been more concentrated up there, for example, at the different developments that are now along 3A, including accidents. A lot of the big accidents happen on 3A, and so if you need to get an ambulance there, you're going to 3A. And so we're trying to also meet the demand where it is and have better access to the Beechwood areas as well as areas that are farther away. And so this is a great opportunity. And in the long-term financial planning update, we'll go into a little more of how all of these numbers and tax, potential tax increases work together, too. So would anyone like to make a motion to move forward with? I'm sorry? Oh. Is there any public comment, Mr. Schreger? Good call.
I don't.
Good.
Okay.
I'd like to move, we move forward with the police and fire building at 135 King Street.
Second half.
And when you say move forward, just to be clear, you're saying we, we sign a purchase and sale agreement, subject to the town meeting approval and special election ballot vote, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Second to Mr. Grady? All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Everyone's in favor? That's great. Justin?
If I may, both videos are now on the Cohasset Facebook page. So if folks are interested, who didn't see the video, it is now available on the Facebook page, facebook.com/AtTheCohasset. If you don't do it.
Okay. Great, thank you, Justin. All right. Now we are moving on to the Roads and Sidewalk Stabilization Fund. Mr. Grady, you are select board liaison, you're on the hot seat once again. You want to take it away?
All right, I'm going to read directly from what we put together today. So it'll be brief, and I'll kind of speed read it.
Sure.
Because I kind of dropped the ball on the other one. So the Sidewalk Safety Connectivity Committee, SSC or CME, was charged by the select board with developing a five-year plan to evaluate and subsequently prioritize roadways, sidewalks, improvements. And these improvements may consist of reconstruction of existing infrastructure, traffic calming measures, and the development of new sidewalks. We have reevaluated and considered the sidewalk and pedestrian curb ramp improvement by TEC Incorporated by November 4, 2022, in addition to performing our own assessment of town roadways and sidewalks from September up to now, even past before that, I'm sorry, from June. And working with DPW, we find that roads should be repaved at a minimum approximately every 20 years. We have 37 miles of public roads in town that equates to a necessity of paving 1.85 miles a year to stay on that minimum 20-year schedule. To date, just approximately, we allocate $300,000 is allocated from the town's budget to the maintenance of roadways and sidewalks. The cost to annually resurface existing roadways is approximately $1 million. Due to attack, due to lack of yearly funding of our roadways and sidewalks, we as a town are in the unfortunate position of playing catch-up to repave and maintain roadways and sidewalks that are long overdue. It is evident from the committee's assessment and TEC report that the town of Cohasset is now in a position where our roadway infrastructure is crumbling, dilapidated or non-existent in key safety areas, most notably within one mile of the schools. And this is reported on social media at all times, and we're always hearing it, and justifiably so. While not all roads are the same price with different characteristics of width, walks, utility castings, drainage, et cetera, the cost of resurfacing an existing road is approximately $500,000 per mile. Therefore, to resurface the 1.85 miles of roads needed to keep to the 20-year schedule referenced above would be cost approximately, cost approximately $925,000 a year. This is only the vehicular driving surface and does not include sidewalks. Add the cost of pedestrian sidewalk surface, which costs approximately $1 million per mile, again with a wide range of variability in cost based on curbing with HP ramps, ADA accessible intersections, et cetera. That said, an annual budget of $1 million is only meeting the vehicular driving needs on a 20-year cycle. Without funding, Cohasset will continue to fall well short of even the minimum requirements necessary to carry out a 20-year paving and maintenance cycle, which will leave the town in the ongoing position of having to continually address our infrastructural needs as they only become critical. And prioritization criteria, I mean, this will all be out, it's public, I won't get into all the detail, but we do have grants that we've applied for. We're requesting $190,000 that will cover all the costs to address and issue and identify the town's ADA accessible needs. And we are expected to utilize all state grant mechanisms to apply for future infrastructural improvements next year when the grant application period is in its open season. And there will be a spreadsheet posted for where we've come up with our prioritization plan and the ongoing paving plan afterwards. I had to get that all out.
Okay. So it's safe to say, Mr. Grady, that $1 million a year is probably the bare minimum of what we feel we need at this point? And it looks like that is the ending conclusion sentence of?
That would be the bare minimum of what we need, but it would keep the ball rolling instead of the currently provided $300,000, which we're constantly having to juggle.
And this year, in terms of the road paving that is still scheduled to be paved, we have Smith Place, Cushing Road, Atlantic to Margin to Whitehead, Margin, Elm to Atlantic, Elm to Downtown. And that is going to be the majority of the funding that we have for this year. 2024 slated projects that are going to be funded by outside entities, namely utility companies that, as we all know from driving on these roads, have been doing work. That's for Beechwood Street and Pond Street, for those who are interested. And you alluded to, on top of the paving that is about to happen or slated to happen from the utility companies, there's also the pretty extensive five-year plan, or I should say three years, with other roads still under consideration and sidewalks in the Excel spreadsheet that you've provided to the board.
Yes.
Okay. And so, for example, on, in 2024, we're looking at South Main Street, for example, which is a big, major artery that people care about and have, have talked to us about, as well as a variety of other houses as well, excuse me, other roads. And we're looking also to seek state funding to really improve ADA accessibility on many sidewalks that are in need of repair.
Yes, and to do that is roughly about $140,000 to $160,000, which we've applied for a grant for.
Are there questions that the board has of Mr. Grady? So right now, we get approximately $200,000 in state funding each year through what's called Chapter 90 money. And the sidewalk committee's recommendation is at least $1 million, it sounds like. And so we're looking at one proposal that's been on the table that we asked the sidewalk committee to consider whether this was an appropriate amount, was an $800,000 stabilization fund. So the effect of that would be, right now, the way we pay for our roads is we rely on the state money, plus we have an additional $300,000 that we take out of our capital stabilization fund money that we allocate each year.
In the state, you can average just about two, which is about the average that we're receiving from the state. And that depends on their budget, ongoing budget. So, you know, it is a constant juggle. And it's something that we're looking to finally catch up on.
So if we did a stabilization fund of $800,000, plus the additional 200 we expect on average every year from the state, we would get to that $1 million that the committee is recommending at a minimum, we consider. And that $800,000 could be funded through a tax increase vis-à-vis the stabilization fund mechanism, and then we can go into how much that costs. But it sounds like that number is in line with the sidewalk committee's?
If that's in line with what we're looking for, and would we like more? Sure, to get things done, but, you know, we have to be cost-conscious in time. And, but that will start really getting the ball rolling. And, you know, again, I think that we're going to be seeing Elm Street in the next few weeks, Cushing, we've got, we're looking at Beechwood next year, and maybe even later, early spring. So I think they're going to start seeing some, with our town of us, we're starting to see some progress, especially as we drive and we walk.
No questions? Yes, Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, I just thought we should, as a point of privilege, I'd like to point out that the work done on Cushing Road, I live on Cushing Road, just so everybody knows, and Mr. Grady is much further down. This Cushing Road has nothing to do where my home is located. It will not impact, they're not doing my street at all. And where Mr. Grady is, that's a program for one of the, it's a special needs program down there, and that has to do with that. But I think I wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Creighton. So if, if the board were so inclined, and, you know, one thing we could do is also to do this after the long-term financial planning update, if, if you wanted to see how the money sort of shakes out, so to speak, but we could vote right now to proceed with a school, with a Roads and Sidewalk Stabilization Fund at approximately $800,000 a year. I don't know if the board feels comfortable doing that, or if, again, you want to see what that looks like tax increase-wise after we go through the long-term financial planning report. How are people feeling?
I'm comfortable going ahead. I think it's something that we need, we have to have. We're addressing the roads and sidewalks only on an as-needed ad hoc basis, only have to become critical. And, you know, it's just something that needs to be done, we have to do it.
Mr. Claxton?
I agree with Mr. Grady. I think if anybody's doubting for these investments, all they have to do is go for a ride around town with a cup of coffee without a lid on it, and it won't be long until you're wearing some of that coffee. And just like the sidewalks, I mean, go push a stroller, ride a bike on some of our sidewalks, there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We're falling behind, and I think this is a smart investment.
Ms. Mar?
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, I have, I'm a little uncomfortable, but on balance, I think we cannot ignore roads. Select Board, by the way, for people at home, we are the road commissioner, so we are responsible. The buck really lands on our, on our desk, so I do think that we need to address this.
I'll make a motion if we need to. I'm going to make that motion, make the motion to?
Yeah, if you wanted to make the motion to proceed with the Road and Sidewalk Stabilization Fund to be funded with a tax increase of $800,000, and then we can direct Mr. Senior to begin the appropriate warrant language, and we can vote on the warrant article.
And I would make the motion to move the project forward with the tax of $800,000. And I would ask our time to edge it to start putting under warrant.
The special stabilization?
Special stabilization. Thank you so much.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right, everyone voted aye. Thank you, thank you, board. Now we're moving on to the School Facilities Stabilization Fund, and this is just an update
It's an update, okay.
Ms. Mar?
So as a, as a way of background, in 2021, the end of, yeah, in 2021, the, the town, the select board and the school committee resurrected the School Facilities Committee, which is a bylaw committee comprised of nine members. And that, and then the town allotted money for a study to be done in effort to make an application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, for the, for the feasibility for a new and/or renovated middle high school. And the firm that they chose was AI3. So in addition to preparing the, the information for the application to the MSBA, they also did a comprehensive walkthrough of all three campuses, Ausgo, Deer Hill, and the Middle High School on Pond Street, and came up with a list of maintenance items, repair items, prioritize them over a period of 10 years, you know, one to three years, three to seven years, seven to 10 years, in terms of when they thought things would need to be addressed. And Nick Berardi, our town facilities director, has since worked with the superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, and the school director of finance and facilities, Ms. Susan Owen, she looked at that list. Nick knows the buildings and the campuses inside and out. He did some juggling of what he thought were more critical issues than others, perhaps, based on, you know, eyesight walkthrough of, by AI3. And they've come up with a fairly comprehensive list together, and they're working on prioritizing it, and it's everything from, you know, mechanicals in the buildings, windows, floors, security issues, safety, fences, curbing sidewalks, things along those lines. And part of the MSBA process for which we were denied as a town, the first application, we have a second application, and now, which we should have a decision on by the end of December, is a requirement to keep your facilities current and, you know, in good repair. And the schools have operated utilizing capital budget money for maintenance and repairs as, as the facility, as the money they have in their own budget is really for custodial work, painting, sweeping, washing floors, light maintenance work, not the heavy-duty maintenance work, which the town has, has handled for quite some time. And it just never seems to be enough to catch up with the buildings as they age. Ausgo is the newest building, Middle High School was renovated in the early 2000s, and as was the Deer Hill. And so it's critical to, much like it is with roads and sidewalks, is, is to really get some substantial money into repairs and maintenance of these buildings, all three buildings, even though the MSBA application is only for the middle high school. And so through municipal finance, there's a special stabilization mechanism that we as a town can utilize to support maintenance and repairs for Cohasset public schools. And so the chair, Ms. Healy-Dipold, and I met with the school committee last week. They seemed enthusiastic about the idea of the stabilization fund, which would have to be voted upon at town meeting, special town meeting on November 13, and then moved to the ballot the following Saturday, November 18. And the fund is renewable with a 2.5% increase each year, if it's approved and voted on by, at town meeting, so that maintenance and repairs can be ongoing, much like the roads and sidewalks can be ongoing. And it's a, a big step forward to support and maintain our three biggest, I'm going to say they're the biggest parcels that the town owns, and three of the biggest buildings. The middle high school is 220,000 square feet, so it's, it's quite large and has many needs. And so we're looking at a $1.5 million special stabilization fund for repairs and maintenance of Cohasset public schools.
Thank you, Ms. Mar. Are there questions from the select board?
You know, I thought it would be very helpful for the people at home to understand some of the nuts and bolts of what we're dealing with, and maybe Chris can help with that. There's a percentage of what everybody pays in property taxes, it automatically goes to the school. Chris, what is that percentage, roughly?
It's what happens every year.
Right.
When there's a net increase in revenue, the historic break has been 61.39, so the schools get 61.
Right, so 61 to 62%. There's a misconception about how that's spent. That is only for, for operating the academic programs in the schools. The town pays for all of the debt service for building schools, town pays for the, The town pays for all of the debt service for building schools, town pays for the, the significant maintenance. So that 62% is allocated, but that's not available to keep the buildings in repair. So that's why it falls to the town above the 62% to pay for the, the maintenance, debt service, building new schools and all that. So I think it's important that everybody understands that, that breakdown.
So, I'm sorry, can we clarify that? It's 61% of new revenue.
New growth.
New growth revenue. It's not 61% of the total operating budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
Of the tax, I'm trying to get the figure of the property tax that people are paying.
It's every year of a new net growth, or new net revenue, which can include other things, too.
So it's of, of total revenue of the town?
No, no. Just new net revenue.
Just new revenue.
New revenue.
So what about existing revenues, taxes?
Well, again, if, if taxes went up a million dollars.
Well, today of the.
That day, it's $610,000.
I think it's, well, maybe you can calculate it another time, but I think taxpayers would like to know how much of their tax that they're paying, what percentage is currently going to the schools.
Well, Jack, the Long-Term Finance Planning Committee has a lot of that information in our report that should be finalized and unveiled next week in terms of all of that background information. Yeah, the, the schools, the schools consume quite a bit of money, but the schools are probably one of our, our biggest expenses and investments in our community. You know, there, there's, there's not, there's a zillow school score for a reason at the end of the day, in terms of when people look in the value of homes. Yeah, you have some unique properties, and we live in a beautiful place, but for people who are looking to come into Cohasset and, and buying in here, schools matter.
Well, I'm not asking for an argument pro schools, I'm just saying that I think the taxpayers need to, need to know how the money is spent. Not arguing against the schools by, by any means, but I'm just trying to figure out, because people ask me quite a bit. So I think that we should do that, and I'm glad it's in the long term.
It's in the long-term plan.
It's in the town report.
Yeah.
I might add that they're also three of our biggest assets, not just for the brick and mortar, but for what sits inside them. I'm just going to put that out there.
Yeah, we know, just a preview of long-term finance, we know historically, we spent about 40% of our capital stabilization fund on schools, year after year. That's a 40% number. We've spent, for example, a lot of money on town hall plans that have not come to fruition, probably more so than schools in certain years, even though the comparative cost of those two buildings is very, very different. And so I think it's fair to say, the picture that we see when we look at all the repairs is that the schools are the largest municipal assets we have. They also cost the most to keep up. You've got, where, you know, you've got 1,000 kids and teachers coming in and out of them every single day. It's, it's heavy wear and tear for those facilities, and, and it's important that we maintain them, because we've seen, including through town hall, the cost of not maintaining can be quite expensive, and we don't really have the luxury of purchasing an off-the-shelf commercial building for a school. Mr. Plucks?
Just briefly, I think one of our most important roles is to make sure we're listening to the feedback we're getting from the people who live here. And again, thinking back to the last town meeting, I would argue half, maybe more than half of the people who stood up and walked up to the microphone had something to say about the schools, and why weren't we doing something about the schools? So I think this is an important step toward making sure those people understand that they were heard, and doing something to, to address their concerns, which was to make sure we're investing in our schools.
And we're trying to do so wisely. I think the point of why we spent so much time going through the repair list, trying to figure out what's a priority. I mean, we're, we're looking at a repair list that is certainly more than 1.5 million a year, particularly if we were to knock out a lot of the high priority items. We're, you know, probably going to need to seek state funding and help for some of these repairs, as is already contemplated in some of the notes associated with some of these items. And we do have a pending application before the MSBA with respect to our middle high school, so we're trying to figure out, you know, we're waiting to see what happens there, as Ms. Mar said, to see if we can qualify for state funding and, and how to navigate that amidst all of the school repairs and maintenance and maintaining those, those buildings responsibly. But Jack, I think a lot of the questions you have are going to be answered through the data in the long-term financial.
Well, it's a very simple question. I think taxpayers deserve the data, and that's all I ask for.
So it's 54%, Jack. At the end of fiscal 2022, the, the expenses of the school department listed under education, which I don't know if that includes Susha or Votek or not, but, okay, it doesn't, was $34.6 million, and the total town expenses were $64.0 million for FY '22, so that's 54% for the schools.
I would say that probably we have a publicity person over here that, people ask that all the time, and in order to make proper decisions, you have to have the data. So, and it's easier if people are dealing with actual data that's been verified, rather than guy down the street says one figure, somebody else says another figure. So all I'm saying is, I think it behooves the town to tell the taxpayers as clearly as possible how the various monies are spent.
But I thought that was going to be coming down the long-term financial plan.
Yes, I understand.
That's been said about five times. You're going to be hearing it in the next five minutes.
Please don't interrupt. In a format that it doesn't take a CPA downstairs. Thank you.
All right. So where we are on the school facilities stabilization fund is that it seems like, and maybe Mr. Creighton, you disagree, but it seems like the board is, and I don't want to speak for you, but I'm going to ask for your affirmation, that the board is generally on board with moving forward with the stabilization fund at 1.5 million, but we continue to work through the repair schedule, including to see and get feedback on whether there's any immediate items to appropriate. And we did get feedback from the, the schools at the school committee meeting that 1.5 seemed like an appropriate number, because I know, Mr. Plucks, you were concerned about, you know, whether that was the right number, so to speak.
I, I fully support everything that you said. I also would emphasize that we're also pursuing for the big-ticket items, the state funding, that's a process, and we're going to work through that and make sure we take advantage of it as best we can and do what's right for Cohasset.
You know, I'm in support.
Madam Chair, I, I think that was uncalled for, to, to assume that I was going to make a comment like that, and I don't, I, I really think that that's not, you know, suitable, especially since I was one of the early champions of the school stabilization fund.
So I would just like to affirm your support, then.
To say that you're assuming I'm taking a position, I, I think was.
No, I'm saying I don't want to speak for you. If you have a different position, or you do not want to move forward with it, I'm, I'm giving you the floor.
No, I just, I just was addressing your statement in which you prejudged that what I, everybody would accept for Mr. Creighton. I don't think that's appropriate for discussion in the select board.
All right, well, I apologize for allowing you the opportunity to not be spoken for. Okay, so I just have. Ms. Mar?
Yes. So I, I think, I think it's important to note also that.
The records say that a select board member should not be treated that way by the chair. Thank you.
Ms. Mar?
So this special stabilization fund for repairs and maintenance doesn't preclude the opportunity for the schools to continue to go to the capital budget committee for some of their other historical costs, such as bus leases, technology, some furniture needs, as they've done so in, in the past. So, and I think, I don't want to preclude, I don't want to preempt some of my thoughts about, you know, budget, which will be coming up on our budget message soon, hard to believe in the midst of this special town meeting preparation. But I think we're here in all of our buildings, in all of our town assets, because, because money is so tight, and sometimes we'll get to it next year. We'll get the painting done next year. Well, the, the HVAC unit can, can, can make it through this year, we'll get to it next year. And it's nobody's fault, it's the reality of the size of our town, and it's the reality of our tax base, and we can't have, we can't crow about our high property values and potential resale and not understand the implications that 2.5, Proposition 2.5 has on that, because it reduces our rate per thousand, because we can only increase the levy by 2.5%, the whole dollar amount. So that leaves very little left over for maintenance and repairs. And I think that we should all think about, every department in budgeting, if our, you know, if we're fortunate enough that the town agrees with our position on, on the town hall on One Pleasant and on 135 King, and on these stabilization funds, is we really need to invest in annual ongoing revenue for repairs and maintenance of everything that the town owns, because we, we are, we are the owners, you know, on behalf of the citizens of Cohasset. And we have done so much work getting to financially, and I don't want to steal your thunder on financial planning.
No, no.
But we've done so much work, the town has done so much work, I can't say we, because I'm only four months on the board, has done so much work in getting us into a position with a tremendous bond rating, and with, with clarity in our financial position, which wasn't always the case here in Cohasset. And I can tell you that, Mr. Prack could probably tell you that, that we really need to think about, if we do this, how are we going to maintain and support these buildings and these acquisitions, so that we're not 15, 20, 35 years down the road looking for new purchases or new builds.
Yeah, and, and I think, too, the, a part of maybe what some of the public confusion may be is there's a difference between how we do operating, the day-to-day, the majority of which are salaries, and then capital. Capital has really been strained over the years, as we'll go through in detail with the Long-Term Financial Planning Report in the future, but it really has been strained year after year, because it's been flat-funded at $2 million. And every time we go get a loan or a bond for equipment, we then pay it out of that future capital amount. So we're getting less and less money in our capital account as items get more and more expensive to pay for, and we're only flat-funding it. And so we've, we're really creating a crunch that we're trying to maneuver around that, you know, candidly, has nothing to do necessarily with our operating in a certain way, because it's just, it's used through a different account and a different bylaw process. It's not used through operating, it's used through capital. So the next item on the list is the feasibility study.
Are we going to vote to move forward?
I, you know, I didn't put a vote on there, because I got the sense that we were still working through some of the repair list, and maybe there could be some use in further vetting.
I think we could vote to move it forward.
We don't have it listed on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
That's the only problem.
Take that back.
You know, we wanted to make sure that we had vetted this, including with the appropriate stakeholders.
Right, and, and I think we just introduced it last week to the school committee, so I think they probably wanted some time to, to digest it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I just thought it was quite a positive topic.
It is, it's very positive. It is positive, and, you know, I apologize to Mr. Creighton, it's not meant to be controversial, I just didn't want to put words in his mouth if, you know, he had concerns. But in any event, moving forward, so we will continue to put this on the agenda every week until we do have a vote and we move forward with it, including if there's any special capital, if there's any capital items that we want to consider asking town meeting to fund.
Right, right. Part of the mechanism is you have to vote the fund in, and then it's town meeting, special or otherwise, that votes to spend out of the fund.
Yep. One other topic we have been, the next item on the agenda is the school feasibility study, or really, probably better termed as just trying to figure out our options at the end of the day. And so this is something that we also briefly talked about with the school committee, and this is something that we've been trying to figure out a little more about, including working with Michelle and Chris on what exactly we may be looking at and want to do here, including working with the school committee. I think there's more work to be done there. I don't think we have a, landed on necessarily like an item by item, but I think, again, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but at least from my perspective, my goal with the feasibility study is to really try to get a better sense and strategic plan of how we want to deploy our stabilization funds in light of what may or may not be happening up at the middle high school, so we can have a better sense of how we want to proceed moving forward. I don't know if anyone has any discussion or anything they want to say about that? Okay. Long-term financial planning. So the group met for quite a while, we've been meeting every week for many weeks now, and we on the cusp of a final report with all of the details and data that Mr. Creighton is seeking, and I think many people are seeking, too. And so, Justin, would you mind putting up the PowerPoint presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Over there.
Okay, great. So this is a short presentation. Essentially, this is the executive summary that the group has agreed to, and let me just say, by the way, background, this is a group that is formed under Mr. Senior. We have had our finance director, Ms. Mullin, there. It is me, the chairs of the school committee, our advisory committee, and our capital budget committee, so Mr. Dial, Mr. Host, and Mr. Hellman. And we have worked pretty tirelessly, so I want to thank my fellow working group members on really trying to take a lot of information. But we've been focused a lot on the immediate recommendations that are before us to figure out what are the impacts and what recommendations, if any, we should make regarding them. So these are the initial recommendations in the executive summary. All right, could you flip to the next slide, please? Excuse me. So here, we, we looked at the five issues or proposals that we thought were before the town for, for town meeting. And so we looked at, for example, 135 King Street, and this includes the all-in price that we've been talking about, which I should note also includes repairs to our existing fire station, to, for example, help get them that decontamination space and equipment that they need, so to help bring up our existing fire station as well. So when you price that out, you're looking at approximately a tax increase of 220 a year, and that's over a 30-year debt exclusion. And that's assuming at a median home value of $1 million. And for One Pleasant Street, we're essentially looking at a similar price, and again, that's approximately 220, we're using round numbers, just because it's easier, and that's for 30 years. A $1.5 million school stabilization fund, that's going to be approximately $400 a year, with that number growing or decreasing depending on the amount in the fund. And so just by way of background, the way these special stabilization funds work is that the select board can increase the fund by 2.5% each year if we so choose. We could also decrease it to $500,000, or whatever, whatever amount we want, but whatever amount we decrease it to in a subsequent year, we're stuck at that amount, and we can only increase it by 2.5. You can't go back up. If you go down to 500, then to 1.5 million the next year, that's not the way it works. And so it's $400 a year, but that could be variable, depending on what the select board does. And then the $800,000 annual road and paving fund, so that would be, we're, we're looking at, and we're. and we're assuming we're going to get a million in total when you add in the extra 200 in state costs, state funds. So that would be approximately $210 each year. And again, it's a stabilization fund, so it can increase and decrease. And then we're looking at the recreation project. So here, we are recommending CPA funding, if CPA is so inclined. If that doesn't happen and we don't have any other sources of funding, that would be a tax increase of $85 a year. So all in, if all of these proposals are adopted without any alternative funding, such as CPA funding for, let's say, Fields and Rec or even the affordable housing units at Town Hall, the aggregate maximum increase on the median home, and median being assessed at $1 million, will be $1,135 once the tax increases are phased in over time. So these tax increases aren't necessarily going to hit all at once, but there will be a time when they do add up to a maximum of $1,135. That said, the taxes are set to decrease after the 2024 Deer Hill roll-off, tax... the debt exclusion we got 20 years ago by $220 for that same median home. So the net maximum tax increase would be $915 when you account for the decrease juxtaposed against the increase. And we also want to point out that the assessed home value is not necessarily the value of your home. It's what it's assessed at. And you can find that value listed on Cohasset's property assessment database. That's... You can Google it. It comes up as Cohasset Patriot Properties, but you would see what the assessed home value is that way. The other recommendations that we have is that we recommend that we maintain fiscal discipline with respect to operational spending to avoid operational overrides in the future in light of these capital tax increases we're proposing. We recommend that we adopt policies relating to the proposed stabilization funds to ensure spending procedures that follow a governance process. We already have a stabilization fund. Actually, it's our Special Ed Stabilization Fund, and we have a pre-existing stabilization fund policy. So we've looked at that as a model to go forward. We also recognize that we haven't necessarily considered every capital need in Cohasset, including the fact that the Cohasset Middle High School is an aging facility and it could require meaningful investment in the future. But we think, notwithstanding that ongoing process to figure out exactly what that investment is, that we think all of these projects and funding requests represent financially prudent tax increases that capture unique time-sensitive opportunities while addressing many of Cohasset's infrastructure needs. And so that's just the summary. There's a lot of data behind this, including looking at peer communities and their tax rates and our income values and our property values against theirs. And so we'll come up with that later on once we have the full report finalized. But that's where we are. Questions? That's our executive summary for now.
I have a stupid math question.
Sure.
If your home is assessed at $2 million, is the tax increase double?
Yes.
Is that how the... So it's not a sliding scale?
It's not a sliding scale.
Okay. Not that my home is assessed at $2 million. By any stretch of imagination.
But some people's ours. Yeah. No, it's a fair question. Okay. Mr. Senior, do you want to lead off? Are there any public comments or questions on long-term financial planning?
No.
Okay. Now we're talking about the community engagement that we intend to do for all of these items and how we want to get the word out.
As soon as all of you are at chocolate, but I'm very sorry, hard copies, so I can make notes.
I've got one.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I circulated a couple of draft versions. So this is one that I keep up against a... Actually, it lists the key topics that you're heading for the special time meeting, key areas of focus, which I'll walk through really quickly. And then this is what you do with the end for all of you. Our big task on this, obviously, that is to... This is number one, the Town Hall, Police Station, Fire Addicts, Fields and Courts, and then zoning. Don't forget the zoning amendments are on the agenda here, at least for now. Petting the public hearing and planning warrant next week or two weeks from now. And there's some key areas of focus. The website, Town sponsor public meetings I want to talk about a little bit, social media, traditional media, some person-to-person, which I'll talk about in a second. Community presentations, which I want to talk about for all of you. And then the special time meeting pages just as now kind of set up and sort of start building as we add things to it. On the website, you see under Tasks, a couple of the key things that I want to let you know about is IT's ready to come up with a model tax cap. So you'll be able to type in your address. It'll pull up your value and you can see what the impact would be on any and one of the projects or all of them together. Remembering that, this is not a flat bill, right? So the stabilization funds are steady, but the debt exclusion over time, they kind of, they start high and they start coming down right away the way that Jennifer typically structures debt. So...
So Chris, just to put a finer point. When I say $1,135 max, or let's say, I forget the exact number, and, you know, 9:05, that's the height, and then it starts dropping, right?
Right. I mean, we're actually reached that either because some projects will layer in, like the police and fire station, right? There's a period of design and then build. So it'll take two or three or four years for the debt to actually get onto the rolls. And if we buy, for example, the One Pleasant, it'll start higher and then it'll start coming down right away. Because unlike a mortgage, which is typically the same amount every month, this is a level principle. So the payments start higher, but it makes the interest go way faster. That's the way Jennifer Teig likes to structure the debt, our finance director. And it makes sense. It actually saves interest. It allows you to bring on new projects earlier. That said, you know, there'll be that on there. So people will be able to take something similar to that for their work. And then, you know, so people understand what Town Meeting and Town Election, what are the different roles. We want to have the talks a little bit about, you know, just what happens. Because they're all different, and they're linked this time, very, very, very much so. With videos. So you saw the first kickoff of Justin's tonight. Next really phase of this is what we're calling telling the story. We want to do some more of these. And again, any of you that want to participate, in fact, all of you in your individual areas, we particularly like you to take part in Hall and the Roads, and Allen and Schools, and Chris and Fields and Courts, and Jean and Town Hall and Public Safety. Any of you can be on any of them if you'd like and be part of those conversations and at the public meetings, which we'll talk about in just a second. And then we want to go to a phase three of this. People talking about the projects and why they think they're valuable. Because I think it's important people hear their neighbors say this. You know, but all of you and our community and the school committee and advisory and capital are important to hear from. I think it's also important that we get some residents. So if there's folks that you know that really are gung-ho, it's important that the town hears it some, too. I know people do that themselves, but we have a great videographer and a lot of great tools. So one of the things that we had very successfully, I think, last year with zoning, with these public meetings and public conversations. So we're talking about holding four community conversations this fall about items on the warrant. We're calling them community conversations, you know, because it's really what they are. Start off on the 20th. These are on Mondays. Start off on the 25th, after sunset, by the way. So you have to, of course, Sunday night to Monday night, but, you know, wait until the sun comes down. So this will be at 7:00. It'll be on Town Hall and Public Safety first. We do it at the library, again, depending on everybody's availability. There'll be staff, there's Justin, Jean, you'd be the select board lead on that particular one. And we want to put a little panel together to talk. And then we do it live on Facebook and Zoom, and we'll get questions from the audience. We'll monitor it, and if people want to be at home, or they're going to be in the audience, that'd be great. And we do the same thing on the second with school facilities and roads and sidewalks. So it seems to link well. We're going to try to do that at the high school, the community room at the high school, if we can get that room. And Ellen, you'd be the lead, Paul, you'd be the lead on those. We'd have two little panels, you know, involving perhaps, you know, Jay and Pat Sullivan and that style, maybe Jason Earls, if he was available, just to talk about, you know, the concepts.
Do you want me to reach out to them?
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, again, I want you all to, you know, it's not locked in stone necessarily. We've locked the dates up. If you want to tweak this, you know. And then the 16th would be the Field and Courts conversation, kind of like a redo of August 2nd. We'd probably do it at the library. Make sure that the rec commission's in. We get some of the sports leaders in and, you know, the youth groups and talk. And again, you could kind of like, you know, moderate the panel aggressively or however you want to handle it. And Megan will be the staff lead on that. And then the zoning one. And that would be, you know, Cassandra and Montana will be the points on that. I talked to Cassandra today. She's actually coming back from a trip that's Sunday. So if her plane gets stuck, Montana will be covering. But Cassandra would be the staff point on that. And we'd do it much like we did last year, you know, Tom and the town's liaison, the select board liaison is Jack. And, you know, you figure out that panel. That'd be the last one, only because their hearing is not until the 27th. So they need time for people to adjust, and that would come up the last of the session. And then we do what we've done before. We, you know, have a little roundtable for 143TV. We could actually do that live as well and also record it. I get comments and questions. And we kind of talk through what's on the warrant. And I think we'd probably break into two pieces because there's so much. One, maybe on the capital projects. And we get like a rotating cast of characters on that. And then the other on everything else, the zoning and everything else. Because there's got to be other things on the warrant. And people do want to know what else is on there. And it's been, we've been doing this for six, seven years. And it's been, I think, well-received. So those are those. Any, by the way, I don't want to just give any thoughts on those. Does that make sense to these kind of meetings? Okay. All right. So there's going to be a postcard later this week over the weekend that'll be a save to be for the special time meeting and special town election. And the other side will be the relations manager we've kicked off. You know, with a little QR code, download the app, go to the website. So just a reminder. We're talking about maybe boosting the warrant a little bit. Tracy just confirmed that we're going to use nicer paper this time. And we might put a little more materials on the warrant. So if there's things, graphs or charts or other documents that'll help explain. Oh, and definitely links. So Justin's going to do a few QR codes, people can scan those. Do you have a, looks like you have a question?
When do you need those if we're going to get them into the warrant?
Soon, like early October would be great.
Okay. I'm just thinking about the likely questions that are going to come up and the ability to clearly articulate what this means in a way that's compelling in a chart.
We could have some FEQs in there, and we also have links, too. I mean, it could, you know, the warrant is a hard copy. It's kind of hard, you know, you can't put a live link, but you could put a QR code in there and scan that. Again, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I struggle with QR codes. I'd imagine a lot of people do, but...
Just one tool. It's not the... And we hope, like, try to produce the warrant that people can download, too, if they want. I mean, we're required by, by a lot of mail, at the end. So hard copy only gets you so much.
If there's an option to get simple charts in?
Yeah, there is, absolutely. Color, we'd never use color because it kind of costs. But, you know, very simple charts, it's going to be great. And then we're talking about doing one more mailing that last week for the meeting, or very early November, explaining again, again, a quick, something that might be, maybe a trifle, something like that, something simple that will go to everybody with key information on all the major projects so they can maybe carry that with them to Town Meeting or something. So one more educational piece. Because at that point, everything will be done. The committee will theoretically have taken place. Hopefully, you'll be able to say everyone's gung-ho and all good. We have plenty of time to figure that out. But, you know, we spent $800 bucks to do a simple postcard to the town and more than that if you're doing something a little more elaborate. But if something's roughly postcardish, it's about $800. And direct mail, in a small town, actually has more impact than I would have thought. It cuts through a little bit, particularly if people are looking at it. It's well-designed. It's got a hell of an impact. So social media, obviously, we're, you know, Justin's already posted stuff on Facebook, right? We're going to continue to use all that strategically. And you are all encouraged to share on your own papers if you have any stuff you do associated with it and encourage your friends to tell to friends, and so on and so on. Traditional media, we're still, you know, we have the Cohasset anchor. We still have the Patriot Ledger. We have the Globe. We're kind of trying to make use of all of those. ATD, if anyone wants to go on ATD and talk to them. It's hard to translate some of this stuff to radio, but still, you know, every medium we have. I know that ATD would love to have people on, talking about things. And they can maybe put a spin even on the Sports and Rec. I know they have a big sports section. Person-to-person, so small town, face-to-face contact, really important. So there's two aspects to this. One is, we're going to start, we're going to do a table at the Farmers Market the last couple of weeks. Megan's library, the group already has a table, so we're going to just piggyback on that and have some materials to hand out, one-pagers and stuff like that for people. And then the story walk. You've seen the story walk. We want to use that and use it to explain the stories of the projects and put that up maybe at Milken Field for the, you know, Soccer Day or at the library, and maybe on the Common one day for a week and let people know they can walk around and see it. So, and again, it's another event. You think we should set up? You know, we're not going to use all of the pieces. Maybe we can use like six or seven. We can have two different ones at the same time. We just have to give facilities time to mount them and set them up, so. And then we want to have some packets together so that people can take stuff home. They can have those one-page flyers at the senior center, the library, recreation, other places, that they can take them home. The next piece that's really going to be you folks' big is community presentations. And we want to prepare a standard presentation that can be used, whether it's for all the projects or some. Just to get a group that's going to go out and do these and then identify the places to go. And the to-do list, which I put in bold at the very last page, is all of you as to kind of create that list of events that you think are really important things to do, committee meetings that really are important to go to and make those pitches, the organizations that might be important to go to, whether that's the SWBSA or the CDF or, you know, whatever. And then create that volunteer list who's going to do these presentations, whether it's all of you or other folks from other boards and committees. And to give an example, so the library is part of the fun events for the fall is just doing a Halloween weekend event. And a part of it is on that Saturday, that 20, I think it's Saturday, the 29th, at the Music Circus. They're going to be doing a trunk-or-treat event. You know, you pop up in your truck, I guess, and you can have candy from the truck, right? Not, didn't do that in my neighborhood growing up. I know it's a hot thing these days, right? And it's safe. And it's also going to touch a truck in the parking lot. And the Paw Patrol is apparently coming. I don't know much about the Paw Patrol. I have a dog, but I understand the Paw Patrol's hot with kids, little kids at least. So the question is, do you want to set up a select ward? I mean, it's not till the 29th, but do we want to have a second look?
Dress up as the Paw Patrol?
You have to fix it with the Paw Patrol, right? You want to set up a station to give out things, maybe give out stuff, information on the, to, to parents to take stuff home. Who wants to go there that night? And what, what do you want to give away? So that's just one event, which could draw a lot of young families, by the way. So, uh, but, you know, soccer field, I mean, you know, lacrosse, uh, field hockey, um, football games, do we want to set up a little table at them, at the football games, or just have a few people there when people come in and out? And I know that Ellen is just plugged into Cohasset local sports as, as, as we, we have. So she's had me to multiple events.
I'm Coach Mars mom.
So, uh, if there's things like that, things that you say, yeah, you, this is a game we really need to be at, this location we need to be at, I think it's important. And all of you have different parts of the community.
Good question. Mr. Raw. Can we, we get those, sound like vote yes?
I think, so the.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
The town cannot fund.
No, I know, but what will we put on it?
But we can privately fund, uh, you know, signs to advocate for voting at the ballot if we so decide.
Yeah, so what will we put, what would be something to put on it? Because, I mean, those?
Well, I think we could talk about that offline if we have a fund.
So the, the, the warrant, for special town meeting, advocacy is totally fine for, for all of us anyway, because that's our job, right? We're advocating the government's agenda, right? But for an election, when you're asking people to pay more taxes, we can give information about the projects, but we can't advocate. You can't as citizens, you can't as government officials, and we can't use government resources to do that. We can give, use government resources to explain what the election is, what the ballot questions are. We can't do a packet, you know, like you get every year from the state, ballot questions. We can't do that. We talked to Carolyn already about that. You have to have a special provision in your, kind of, adject, and very few people have that, to allow counseling, so we can't actually do that. But we can, we're going to do all this information in advance of town meetings, all of that is transferable. Uh, questions?
No.
Yeah, because my hand is up. This is awesome, and it, it's amazing, you know, all, all of the work. I was thinking of a little different tact, and, um, in addition to, okay? Only from campaigning, and Chris, I don't know if you felt this, but when I was on the fields and parents are watching their kids, they're watching their kids, and they, like, I would wait until a timeout to go approach parents, because, you know, their time with their kids i- is precious. And, and at football games, trying to get someone's attention, um, you know, unless the skippers are really not doing well, and then, you know, Coach Mars should be fired, just kidding. But I, I think, I think maybe we call in, so this is my thought. We can get all the contacts from all the booster groups and have them come in and meet with the fields and rec group and get a complete overview of the fields and rec, you, you know, and how they can support it and get it out to all of their people. For the schools, I think we should go to the Cohasset PSO and the Cohasset Education Foundation and give them the presentation so that they can present it to their constituents and, and push it up that way through the, through the groups as opposed to trying to hit them during games, or, I don't know.
Thanks for volunteering to take that piece of this.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Ellen.
I would go to the Cohasset Rotary Club, they meet on Mondays, I know the president, I would do that, I would call the Chamber of Commerce and get them all together, because this impacts them too. They, they pay the residential rate, but they pay taxes.
Well, again, I think it's better coming from, I, 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 this is the reason we're having this conversation. So I would ask if, if you, if you have thoughts about this, kind of consolidate them, just bring, share, share them with Justin and, and my office. And, um, and we'll kind of help align this, and we'll help pull together a presentation you can take on the field with you, whether it's a PowerPoint or just some, some panels.
I agree, we're going to have to huddle and scatter.
We're going to have to what?
Huddle and scatter. Pull together and scatter.
And I'm not saying not go to fields, I just keep our, keep our time and our, and our expectations measured. Chris, maybe you were more successful because.
No, it's, it's about finding the right moment.
Yeah.
And not shoving it in people's faces when they don't necessarily want to hear it. But to, to capture that right moment, we have to make sure we have the facts in our heads, because I think we all agree, we've got a great story to tell here.
Yeah.
But to have the information at our fingertips when somebody says, well, isn't it expensive? Or, well, wouldn't it be better just to tear down and rebuild the schools? To be able to have information about those options at our fingertips, so when that organic moment presents itself.
Yeah.
We can make sure we're giving people the information they need.
And I, I think, you know, the seniors, I mean, instead of mailing them or doing, I mean, they get together for coffee every Monday, right?
Yep.
It's good coffee.
It's good coffee. You, you know, maybe we come in and say, okay, we, you know, stay for another 15 minutes.
That's exactly the kind of direction we need on those elements of this, right? Because I, I think that one of the things that I've seen, I've always seen, you know, one-ish or so of these, is that, what, I had someone come in the other day to, to haggle with me about a problem that's, it's still not resolved. But he came in and I took time and we talked, and people kind of expect that, and I was able to take time, and I do that when I can, because, you know, and, and I can't always solve the problem, but I, you know, people want an ear. I think that personal contact is something that people treasure here, and something I like too, I go to the farmer's market, and if I'm walking the dog, I kind of run into it. I ran into Jackie Dohm, she's a dog, we talked, we walked for about 10 minutes together, and she went up in one direction, I went in the other. But it was, it's a nice opportunity. So it's that kind of personal contact which I think is going to make all the difference on this, because if people don't understand, they're going to vote, no one is going to vote, come into a voting booth, or even to town meeting, and raise their taxes without understanding why. Now, I, again, I agree, I think it's a very good story to tell, and we want to give you all the information, support that you need to, to sell it. Because if people come into the voting booth and don't know, they're not going to, no one's going to vote yes if they don't understand it. So you have a window of 60 days to educate the community as to how great the project's done. And people still may say, I like this one more than that. That said, I don't want any, we, we want to do our best so people can say, what are you talking about? I haven't heard about this.
Well, I was thinking one thing we could do as a select board is, and I was talking to Chris, maybe we could either do like a shared document of some sort or a shared calendar where we can try to divide and conquer, right? Because there's going to be different people with different connections, um, who can help on behalf of the select board, you know, go out and do whatever. But having a sense of where people are going and who's doing what, I think, would be helpful. So I don't repeat what you're doing, or vice versa. And so I don't know, you know, how people feel about that. We can just have like a list, we could do a calendar. I don't know what people's thoughts are, but it's one shared document.
A calendar to document, to pick, all right, who wants to do this this week? Who says, we're meeting once a week, up until meetings anyways? She just said, all right, grab that, grab that. It's upset about huddle and scatter.
Yeah, and maybe Justin, if Justin knows there's opportunities, whoever happens to be around, if they can make it. You know, like, if you know all the events that are coming up, then.
That'd be a big plus, because you have your finger on the pulse of all that stuff.
That's the bones of it, is what are the events, so we can look and say.
Plug in.
Hey, I've got a couple hours, wanted to go swing by baseball field or lacrosse field.
So we'll get you a list of events so you can pick and choose, see what's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be really helpful.
And part of it's also like, do you want to do the, a short presentation of some of the committees? I mean, obviously advisory and capital and school, I mean, you folks already have that ConCon or.
Fields and rec coming up tomorrow.
Yeah, excellent. I, and then recruiting, like, the rec commission to be part of the army out there pushing that piece, right? And the school committee should be all in on encouraging that piece, and also reminding people that it's part of a, part of a plan, right? It's not, we don't want to sell on people either, right? We want to remind people that it's, it's, it's one town, right?
Yep.
So any thoughts on this, just, again, share them.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
So it's already started, as you see, you've already seen some nice videos that have started.
Those are, those are amazing, like.
Nice job.
Those are really good.
That's that. I'm, I'm going to pass on my update, unless you have any questions for me to answer.
Yeah, no, we've been going on it for a while. The Valor Act, the tax work-off program, we probably want to, I don't know if you want to do something here.
So, um, and we had a little, uh, we had a snack food getting, communicating with Phil. Phil is actually in bridge water with the football team tonight.
Okay.
So, uh.
You want to do this at a later date, or?
We can, I mean, we're not, I, I think maybe we can do it next week, but I, basically what this is going to set up, just so everyone is aware, uh, is a, an ability for qualified veterans to work off up to $1,500 of their tax. Um, and the way it tracks is for every hour of volunteer work, you get credit for $15 and send it to minimum wage, so you don't actually get money. Um, so people understand that, there is, this is taxable, so people understand that. Uh, so, so it could be considered taxable income, that's something. Um, and that you, you, it's, some of it goes into something called Oprah, it's like a kind of a social security work-off. You get the money back when you're done, but you have to contribute, so you're not going to get the full $1,500 this, all the way, but that said, this is modeled on other communities. It's, basically, you'll be able to sign up, there'll be opportunity, job opportunities to take voluntary opportunities. If you have something creative, we can spin it, see if there's a department that'll make it work, and then, um, um, you have to qualify through the veterans officer who'll run this, they'll validate your, uh, your veteran status. You have to own a property class, so the, the essential part of validating, and the work has to get done. In this case, it'll be a fairly tight run, you'll have to get it done until, by the beginning of November, so this will come, whatever you're able to do between now and then will come off in the December bill. And then next year, we'll run for the whole cycle, but again, you won't see the deduction until December, it runs on a fiscal, fiscal year. So, um, we're also now working on something similar for, for seniors, we just don't have the details of that one. So, um, but that's, that's pretty much the plan. So, um.
Do you need a vote from us, Chris?
Yeah, if you want to just vote to approve the plan as presented, we can just move forward with it, we can give you an update.
I'd make a motion to approve the plan.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chris, that does remind me that, um, along with our public communications, uh, I think we also probably want to have some public communications on our tax work-off and abatement programs, for those who are concerned about tax increases, that there may be opportunities available to them if they qualify, including.
It's part of the page, the special time meeting.
Yep. Yep.
This will be one of them, and then there's other, there are, there are other discount programs that are available to seniors and disabled and to veterans, Gold Star thing. Uh, in terms of, of the special time meeting updates, basically, um, that's what you want to do next. I'm jumping ahead to my. The, um, Capitol met last night, and they just, they set up questions. Michelle went to CPC last night and did their presentation, I think that went well. Um, not a formal update, but just letting them know it's coming. I'm going to advisor tomorrow, and I, they're going to be doing much the same, just kind of starting conversations, since you've made some votes tonight, I can actually tell